I'd like to go ahead and call to order the Sanborn Regional School District's School Board meeting for February 1st, 2017 at 7:05 PM. All right. Suits Frank.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very much here for. All right, I'd like to go ahead and take a look at the agenda items this evening. I'd like to go ahead and add underneath new business, an overnight field trip. We have information in our packet. I'm going to move that as letter A, and we'll move everything else down to letter B. I have one other item. I'd like to go ahead and ask for our motion to approve. Before I go ahead and ask to approve the minutes this evening, last week, why the little chuckle was, we didn't actually have camera recording during the public session. And with that being said, I want to thank Ms. Phillips for all that you documented because there was a fair amount there that you had. So I just want to provide updates. So if there's any amendments to it, by all means, just let's take note that last week there was no video for the public session. All right, so I'd like, with that being said, may I get an approval of the January 18th, 2017 school board meeting?
So moved.
Okay, that's motion second person. It's Ms. Ross and Ms. Bennett. Any errors, omissions, or discussions? Or, sorry, Ms. Phillips. Any errors, omissions, or discussion relative to the January 18th minutes? No? Okay. All in favor for those minutes? Unanimous? Thank you. Okay. I'd like to go ahead and ask for approval of the school board minutes of January 25th. And again, this was a special school board meeting, not a regular scheduled meeting. Second?
Second.
Yeah, it's a motion approved by Nancy and second by Sheila. Errors, omissions, and discussion relative to 25th. Do you have a packet that's been handed to you?
Yes, Dr. Brown gave me some changes.
Okay. Do you want to verbalize any of them, Dr. Brown, or are you okay with split?
I had three changes on page seven where it says, "Dr. Brown commented that she is not opposed to deferring this for a while on her conversation with," I want to strike "for a while" based on her conversation with, and insert, "until the board receives the fire protection engineer's life safety report as per the Newton Fire Chief."
Okay.
And then on page eight. This has to do with Article III operating budget. Motion made to not recommend Article III by Ms. Bennett. Extensive discussion ensued over the operating budget and the proposed budget. Right after that, I'd like to insert the following. Dr. Brown defended Article III's operating budget. She noted that the board's approved budget number, an arbitrary figure, was based on the FY 2017 budget and not on actual expenditures. That the FY 2017 budget included CIP expenditures of 181,750 and 153,621, page 332 of the budget book, which are now treated as separate warrant articles per FY 2018, and that our enrollment is again expected to decline another 2% in 2017-18 with an overall decline of 16.5% by 2022, page 61 of the budget book. The district has been running unexpendited balances of between a half and three quarters of a million dollars for several years, she said. Dr. Brown added, "The board shouldn't consider no administrative raises for the raises after the raises enjoyed for several years, saving 150.8,000 adjust insurance contributions to enact small increases of 1% for non-union employees and 5% for administrators, and defer or cancel the proposed public relations position, saving 102.9,000 per annum." Brown requested the value of retaining the math coordinator position when Sanborn has experienced a drop in math proficiency outcomes for five of its seven grade levels, third, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eleventh, according to the most recent indicators on the DOE website in New Hampshire, and asked that our math teachers instead work directly together to share best practices and develop curriculum improvements for our students. Brown said that a final area for cost savings in FY 18 is the high school master schedule, which she says shows significant excess capacity along with shrinking class sizes. While a few classes do exceed or add the mandated 25, dozens of other class sections have 14 or fewer pupils this academic year, and she suggested the schedule be immediately reviewed by the board this spring.
You feel, I, yeah, you keep going, right?
And the third change is the same section of that page eight at the end where it said, "Dr. Blake expressed his disappointment at the way the budget committee approached the budgeting process, saying in essence that their decision to eliminate two positions was based on personal vendettas." Right there, I'd like to insert in parentheses, quote, this is a quote from Dr. Blake, quote, "one of whom is a disgruntled former district employee," unquote, said Dr. Blake, close parentheses, and that some of their decisions were made arbitrarily, parentheses, quote, "I don't think much thought was put into it," unquote, he said, close parentheses. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Other errors and omissions this evening? All in favor as amended? Those opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right. We also have a non-public session that we want to go approve a motion for January 25th minutes.
So moved.
Okay. Second by, we're slow to gate tonight, everyone. Come on now.
Second.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion about the non-public minutes? Seeing none? All in favor? Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, the manifest and register. I see there's green envelope over there that's being held hostage right now. It's neither here nor there. Any discussions relative to that this evening? Yes, Dr. Brown?
I noticed an item, Center for Collaborative Education for 23,449.76, PACE Initiative, November, December, 2016. Was that for training, basically, or cost of training? Center for Collaborative Education, 23,449.
I mean, I, we have to look it up.
Okay, sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for asking, Dr. Brown. All right, other further discussions relative to registers? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Minister reports this evening, I'd like to get a discussion about the public hearing dates, Newton and Kingston?
Yeah, as indicated at the last board meeting, we had a petition warrant article come forward this year regarding the establishment of the default budget, and according to RSA, the, that particular petition warrant article has to have a hearing in each town between the dates of the deliberative session and the voting day. So we need to establish dates for that.
With that being said.
And the Kingston one be at it right before school board meeting?
Good question. Did we do that?
We've done that in the past.
Yeah, we have, yeah. So, so the suggestion you're thinking is the Kingston one's being held in between the deliberative and also the, okay, so we have a meeting on the 15th, which I think is a little too.
The 15th?
The 15th of February. Yeah, we have, so we have first, obviously, is tonight, deliberative's next weekend, then we have the 15th of February. And there's already scheduled that evening, an excellence and student achievement meeting. So we're going to not do the 15th.
Oh, 5:30.
Right.
If we're not having with the regular meeting, why don't we just do it the 15th? We'll be doing, we could do it during the school board meeting, am I correct?
Yes, you can.
So have the.
I'm just saying, I'm looking at the time. Between deliberative session and the 14th.
So perhaps the public hearing could be at 7:00 and the school board meeting could start at 8:00?
If it lasts that long.
At the conclusion of.
At the conclusion of, yeah.
Okay. It has to be between the 15th and the 28th, so we can do it on the 15th.
Yeah. All right, so Kingston.
That's at one town, now where do we do the other?
Where and one? So last year, we had a public hearing at the middle school.
Yeah.
Which I highly recommend, we just do it there as well.
Yep.
Okay. So I want to do it on the 22nd, just do the subsequent week?
Yeah.
Okay.
School vacation week.
School vacation.
No, the school vacation week is the following.
Oh, the last week in February?
Yeah. It's very different this year.
We call it February break.
The election's the 14th, right, can you bring that up to March?
March 12th. So we have February 1st, or March 1st is a Wednesday.
Yeah, February 1st is March 1st.
That's also during vacation.
Wednesday, that's during vacation.
And we also have to fall within the 15th to the 28th here.
The only other available day is the 28th.
The 22nd.
It has to be between the 15th and the 28th, yes?
Correct.
So that really leaves the 22nd, or any day that week, the 20th or the 24th.
Why don't we just do it the 22nd, have that the only thing on the agenda?
Fair enough. At this time?
Yeah.
Okay.
I read it out.
So Newton the 15th, 7 o'clock, or Kingston's 15th at 7 o'clock, and do we want to do the 18th earlier?
22nd?
The 22nd, pardon me?
Yes.
So 22nd, what time?
6:00, 5:30.
Wow, we're going to get repeat times.
Yeah, that's not, for work schedules.
Split the difference, 6:30.
6:30?
I mean, we got to work at 5:00 by the time they get home if they want to come. Home at 6:00, say.
So that's February 22nd?
February 22nd at 6:30, 15th at 7:00.
And the 22nd's at the middle school?
Want that the middle school at 22nd?
Has to be in Newton, yeah?
Yep.
Default budget. That's petition warrant article.
Great.
And the other one's going to be on the 15th. It's a regular meeting.
Perfect. All right, is there a further discussion that we need to engage with that, Dr. Blake? Great. Awesome. All right, school board, chairperson's comments. I'm going to get a couple of stressing, a couple of items I'd like to stress here this evening. First being the middle school windows. There's a lot of stuff out there in the ether to quote an esteemed colleague to my left, and that stuff in the ether is challenging to many who are receiving these questions, comments, and what have you. So I'd just like to make sure we're all on the same page here, so the right information gets out there. So needless to say, with trying to bring clarification and quabbosh the misinformation regarding the middle school windows, as we all should and do know, and especially the community members as well, that today, the windows at the middle school that are, we're out for, you know, we have a hopeful petition warrant article that will be passed, one of these windows, these windows are placed in a wing that was built in 1978. These windows will be required to comply with life safety codes that are currently in place. As we all know, those windows today are grandfathered in to life safety codes because they predate, you know, when they're exposed, and I'm sure Mr. Broderick, you can expound a little bit more about grandfathered in and so forth. But needless to say, today, the windows that are, need to be replaced are grandfathered in, they're in the wing that was established in 1978, is a true statement that when the windows do hopefully get replaced, they'll be using the code in current.
It loses its grandfather status.
True statement, precisely. So it's extremely challenging, concerning that many are going to other people and saying that the fire marshal's office, or better yet, the Newton Fire Chief have made suggestions that these get replaced, because that is not the case. And we should be very cautious when we go ahead and raise awareness of things that could concern us. We obviously don't want that building shut down, they haven't made any comments, and I appreciate what the Newton Fire Chief has done and had to field calls and questions. So I just want to make sure it's known here that we, the school board, have not made any allegations other than the fact that these windows need to be replaced. And I obviously have spoken a lot about that.
Guess I'm not the only one who've got phone calls. I assume you did.
Yeah.
It's my understanding that the Newton Fire Chief has not written any reports, and I don't believe he really knew about that it was a life safety issue. My understanding, he was kind of blindsided on that. Would you say that's a good general?
I'm very pleased with the Newton Fire Chief not calling to attention something that is not in current compliance.
Right, right, yeah.
I'm very happy that he hasn't.
You're right, we had to be very, very careful on that.
Correct. So moving on from that, I'd also like to go ahead and remind ourselves, as we looked at the warrant articles last week, there were some questions and concerns, and I saw this stuff going around too. This is really important, while we make cuts in one area, there's always an increase in another area, right? Something's got to be given. So the Budcom's proposed operating budget did have a tax impact increase, just to remind ourselves and the community members. I'm kind of doing a little quote here, "Based upon the dollar amount that the budget committee had reduced at the high school and made recommendations for, we had to recalculate the estimated high school tuition to be billed to Fremont." All right, any questions or comments about that before I go forward? Because that's a true statement. With that all being said, the estimated revenue will be decreased by $120,000 and will need to be raised in our property taxes, be it Kingston and Newton. The new estimated tax impacts, Kingston actually is at negative 2 cents. So there, what there was once a further reduction is now at .02, not .06. Where Newton has now another increase, and we're going to .05. So needless to say, it actually raised the Newton tax rate. Right, right. Not actually did the opposite. So again, while we reduce here, because we reduced here, and we're asking for, you know, Fremont has been providing tuition assistance because it is a high school, we actually now, because of that, we actually have to raise the base for Newton and Kingston. So we have to be careful what we ask for, as we all know. I have an extra dot in that, I'm sorry. So those are my comments this evening. What's what? We going to ask for public comment?
I think that's why schools failing in math.
How about, do you mind standing up and announcing your name and your town that you're resident of?
Microphone, right over there.
Robin Gerford.
Hello.
Listen, the school's been failing in math and science, right? Did you lay off the, or fire the, whoever's running the department? Did you?
I didn't say no or yes.
Okay, so the school's been failing in math and science for two or three years, and nobody gets fired. The taxes keep going up. You know, and that's enough. And you're trying to tell me that if we lower our taxes, our taxes are going up? That's what you're trying to tell me?
I'm trying to tell you that the numbers are what the numbers are.
You people don't even have a clue what you're talking about. You got it? Man, I don't even know how to, I don't even know how to talk because.
Jim Baker, Newton. I'd just like to make a comment about the increase due to the Fremont tuition adjustment. If Newton's going up 5 cents because of that adjustment, that's a far cry from the increase of 89 cents, which it would go up if the default budget passes. And in Kingston, it's a decrease of 2 cents, and with the default budget, if that passes, it would be an increase, I believe, of 77 cents, 72 cents. So we're looking at a substantial savings if the operating budget passes, even though Fremont is going to share in some of those savings. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Other further public comments this evening?
Last week, the school board and its chair allowed and even encouraged politically motivated remarks by one of the district's employees about members of our communities who serve as elected representatives in volunteer capacities. Dr. Blake did a whole lot more than express his disappointment last week with the budget process. There is nothing in the mission of the budget committee that says it's appropriate for the budget committee to align themselves in lockstep with the superintendent. It's his job to advocate for as much as he can for the schools. But his remarks last week were far beyond advocacy. His remarks were personal attacks on individuals, on their work, and on their motivations. The remarks Dr. Blake made were not only uncalled for, but ascribed false motivations, were untrue and acerbic. For one of his aspersions, he attacked one person as a, quote, "embittered former school board member." He attacked another person as a, quote, "disgruntled former district employee," skirting, if not outright violating, her personal employment rights. Budcom members have invested 10 months of volunteer hours to comb through the budget. There was nothing arbitrary or vindictive. There were no vendettas. There were carefully thought-out decisions made. Your chair talks about culture in the district. The kind of divisive comments Dr. Blake was allowed to make contribute nothing positive to the culture we have for the children in our district. In each of our towns, there are few who are willing to volunteer to give hours of service to the towns and what the district needs. No wonder when the result of service will be to be subject to such attack, not only from fellow citizens, but also from employees who do not even live here. We have different opinions, we come to different conclusions, but the vitriol countenance by members of this board towards your fellow citizens is something to reverse. For Dr. Blake, an employee of this district, to be allowed and even encouraged to disparage your fellow citizens is a real blow to the culture of the district you expound and promote. To have your fellow citizens be subjected to the political castigation from someone whose salary we all pay is completely inappropriate. My name is Annie Collier from Newton, I forgot to introduce myself. I'd also like to say on the $120,000 adjustment, I have asked and not yet received, but would appreciate receiving from Ms. Coppola, a calculation of the actual reductions that that $120,000 is offset by, more than, much more than offset by. It isn't an equal thing, and it isn't that we went down $120,000 to go up $120,000. We went down a lot more than that in this proposed budget. And I think to put out there the information that we went down $120,000 without giving the whole story that you still like, Mr. Mason, is not an accurate representation. Thank you.
Years of neglect. Next, public comment? Other further public comment? Once. Michelle.
Cheryl Gannon from Kingston. This is just a comment, and I don't know if it could be addressed in future warrants. Looking at the warrant of, the way the recommendations of the budget committee are, it's the way it was voted, but I'm finding it confusing and wondering if the public might find it confusing, because the budget committee, when they did not recommend something, the way it's recorded on the warrant, it says "in favor." So in favor of not recommending. And then the one following it is recommended by the school board in favor. In the past, the motion has been to recommend, and then if you don't recommend, you vote against it. So I think it's confusing here, and I don't know if that could be addressed in future times, that those be consistent, so that the voters, when they see "in favor," in favor, that it's kind of apples to apples. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Other further public comments at this time? Moving on. School board comment? Yes, Mr. Broderick?
What Michelle just brought up, are we going to do that? Do you need a motion to do that? Because I think she's absolutely right. You know, it's almost like a double negative here, and it is confusing, I was going to talk about it. Just not recommend and then the vote. Are you going to want a motion to do that, or are we going to just agree that should be done that way? Keep it consistent.
I don't think you can. Signed and gone.
Okay, now that's fine, I just wanted to bring it up. All right, I actually have a couple of things. On warrant article eight, and again, these are just kind of housekeeping things, it says, I'm just, okay, shall the town, shall the Sanborn Regional School do to enter into a conversation, oh yeah, conversations about the potential negotiations with the town of Kingston for the sale? Again, I, this is housekeeping. Do we want to keep the word "sale"? The town of Kingston put out for the future transfer. Sale.
You can't change any of that.
No, I know that, but we can do it as deliberative session.
No, you cannot.
No.
Well, yes, he's right.
It's a petition warrant article, you think?
I, I just, it's not going to change intent, but if it says "sale," are we going to be locked into having to sell it? I just want to, I just want to talk about it now so there's no confusion later on. I mean, if you want to keep sale, that's fine with me. You know, I just want it, again, it's housekeeping. It looks like you're going to sell it. It could be a transfer, it could be a property transfer, could be the school board says, you know what, for $2 million, we don't want to touch it, let's give it to the town. I don't know. What do you think?
I thought, um, check with, for sale.
No, that's, that's fine. It's just, what if it's a property transfer? It's not technically, I just want to bring it up, it's a housekeeping thing, if you want to keep it, fine.
I think the important part of the warrant article is asking if we can enter conversation.
But it says "sale," and if it's not sale, that's what the people are voting on, and they're saying you're not selling it, you're going to have land for it, and it causes problems. I just, I'm just bringing it up. If you want to keep it that way, that's fine. I think everybody understands why I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah. What alternative word, though?
Future transfer. That's how, that's how, that's how the town of Kingston put it in. Whatever you want.
Yeah, so, as far as legally, it's been reviewed by legal counsel. As far as the Department of Revenue is concerned, it's been reviewed by the Department of Revenue, so it's certainly up to the school board of how you want to word, you know, the warrant article about starting conversations, you know.
Is it our intent to try and sell it and make, get some money from the property?
Whatever, no, no, that's fine. I just wanted to say that sale means we're going to sell it, not necessarily do something else.
I think the "enter into conversation" part precludes locking in the sale part.
That's fine, again, this is housekeeping.
Next, next one?
One other thing, Deb Powers, who is the chairman of the heritage, the Kingston Heritage Committee, I just talked to Cory on this, is presenting this Saturday, warrant article I, number warrant, it's 18 on the town, eight for us. She made the offer to talk about it at the deliberative session instead of perhaps one of us doing it, because she's going to do it Saturday, so she'll have it locked down. She can get up on the floor and explain it rather than have one of us explain it. I told her I'd bring it to us, you know, bring it to the board, and if the board said yeah, fine, I'll tell her Saturday, you can do it Saturday. I mean, do it as deliberative. What do you guys want to do? Right now, it's me, you know, so it doesn't matter, but where she already did it, and she's very intricately knowledgeable about it, because she's on the, all those other committees, I just throw it out there because she, she made the offer.
Does she currently have, when she, will she be presenting or having a collateral pamphlets and so forth?
I don't know, she just, you know, we're talking, and she said, hey, Pete, if you want, I'll, you know, I said, well, I'll talk to the board and ask them what they want. I can find out more. But we don't have much time between now and then.
I, I think it'd be wise to have her participate. I mean, what's the rest of the board think? Obviously, we're going to be reading it, but.
You still want me to get up and read it?
Like she did here, right?
Yeah.
She'll talk to it, you mean?
Yeah, she'll talk.
You have her talk to it.
Right, right, she'll talk to it, because she's, she really knows it. Rather than me talk to it, have her talk to it.
All right, is, all right, we'll reach out to Deb Powers, and not only that, we'll go ahead and.
Who's going to reach out to her?
More than comfortable doing that? Work with leadership to do so? Is anyone here going to be going to that event on Saturday, just out of curiosity, besides Mr. Broderick? Fill us in if none of us else go in, if you could, if there's any, that'd be great. If you want to give me a call debrief, and I'll send a message out to the rest of the board, that'd be great. Do you know what time that is?
9 o'clock Saturday morning.
9 o'clock Saturday morning at town hall?
At the town hall.
So 9 o'clock, and it's a warrant article 18 discussion?
On the town, it's warrant article 18.
Great.
The school here's eight, eight.
Yes.
So who is going to contact, I mean, I can just tell if somebody will be calling you.
You're more than, I'm sure you might, if you want to do that, that's fine, but I'll be reaching out to.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right, one other thing, sorry.
You going to tell us who you're voting for this week on the Super Bowl?
Pardon? Yeah, right. Okay. I got a couple of calls. Apparently, some, a couple of people went to basketball games, and there was a sign about supporting the Swayze Gym. And the issue wasn't, they were actually, they said a great idea, but the issue they had was that. had was the school should be politically neutral. This person said, what if somebody came in with a sign saying, don't support the teacher's contract, and then somebody else brought a sign and, don't do this, or we support that? And they were concerned that an athletic event would start becoming a political, he said, I just go, one of them said to me, I, I go to watch my kid play basketball, I don't want to see these signs and stuff. I have, over the years, had people come to, we probably all have had, that things like on the Sanborn pride, or teachers are saying this, I don't give much credence to that. But I think when it comes to the, the property of the school district, it should be politically neutral, there shouldn't be signs one way or the other, because we can go to a real hullabaloo, as the Irish here said, if I can use my Gaelic. Just, just, just stay away from that, you know? Now, whether this, I, I, I didn't see the sign, don't know anything about it, but I said, you know what, okay, I'll, I'll talk about it Wednesday night. So again, this is more housekeeping, just letting you know.
Can I ask clarification? Was it parents of this community that were there that complained?
I had, I had three calls.
And the three calls were that there were signs at...
There was a sign.
Okay.
And, and, and again, they're just, hey, Pete, I don't want to get anybody upset or anything, but it really bothered me that there was a sign about three by two and a half, four or three or something.
So at sporting events, a lot of times, people bring their own signs, and like, you know, defense.
No, no, it wasn't that, no, I guess it was in the hallway. I didn't, I just kind of went, yeah, okay, fine, and I said, you know what, I'll talk about it Wednesday night. Their point was, keep the school in the middle, you don't want people coming in with signs one way or the other, and, ugh.
Can I clarify it?
Yeah, sure, and that's fine, because again, we all know, somebody calls you, somewhere in the middle is the truth, but I did say I'd bring it up.
Exactly what happened. The Booster Club asked Vicki if we could put a poster up in support of saving Chase and Swayze. And she said yes. So right next to the admissions table, we put a poster up about the warrant article. If there's a problem with it, we won't put it up again. But that's what it was. And from what I got for the feedback, everybody liked it there, so...
Again, as I said, he supports it, but his concern was, do we really want the school, school, you know, property to get into this?
If nobody wants it, yeah, we won't put it up again.
I'm comfortable with a community member sitting in the stands doing something, me personally, and that's freedom of speech of the person who's sitting there on sidelines. They can wear whatever he or she wears or wants shirts, as long as they're not offensive to me and my, you know, well-being, I guess that's okay, but being facetious here. But the point being is, we as a school board member shouldn't be doing that.
Well, I wasn't doing it as a school board member, I was a Booster Club member.
I, I know, and that's where the gray area stands in place, because you are a Booster member, you are a parent, you know. Yes, Jen?
And how is it different from having signs in, in any part of the school that advertise products, because the company gives us money? I mean, this, I, which I've always thought was a terrible idea. I think the school should be completely neutral of everything like that.
We won't put it up again.
Again, it's a housekeeping thing, I'm just, don't shoot the messenger, please.
Oh, no, don't worry, softball, it's, no, well taken. Other further public comments, or school board comments, pardon me, in public? Dr. Brown? Jan? Yeah?
So, I'm not looking forward to the deliberative next week, because I expect it to be quite contentious, but hopefully we'll learn a lot, and when we hear from people speaking. I just want to note that our average class size does continue to trend below the state average, and yet our performance indicators are not rising for all groups of learners, and yet we continue to spend more each year. I'm not convinced that increasing the budget to shore up an ailing program is the answer to our district's challenges, which is why I supported the Budget Committee's budget. We've heard plenty from our administrators over the past few months, and quite a bit from our students, but one group we've heard very little from has been our teachers. And I'm trying to look down the road, past the deliberative, to a bright horizon here. A plan to ride a tiger is not the same as riding a tiger, as one of my favorite authors likes to say. And the Pace Common Core Individualized Instruction Model has really caused our teachers to scramble each week to help low proficiency students, while having to neglect those in our classrooms who are already proficient or higher. They seem to be standing still while we're trying to help those that are less proficient. Teaching children as unique self-paced learners has its benefits, but students also share many abilities in common, and those commonalities allow for rapid educational progress in a classroom run by a skilled educator. The Move When Ready Individualized Learning Model has produced tremendous academic costs for our district in terms of lost progress for a large percentage of our students. Looking forward, I would like to have a series of listening sessions with our teachers, and have them discuss with board members what's been working and what has not. And listen to what they like about the new model, and what they would recommend we change. So I just wanted to mention that. I know the budget is going to be very contentious next week. I believe we have sufficient funds to make improvements, but there are areas where we can definitely call on our teachers to help, ask for reforms, because they're the experts. Thank you. I just want to mention one last thing. Many districts are moving away from Common Core as I speak, so it is still experimental. Thank you.
I actually have, I don't think I've ever agreed with you more, Dr. Brown. I think having the teachers in here, just sharing some ideas would be really beneficial, because it's true, they are one of the only groups that we really haven't heard from. Also, just so the community knows, and I don't know if, if, I mean, maybe they do, maybe they don't, our school board chair has been putting out a lot of literature, I guess, or a lot of facts on some social media outlets. I know there are a couple on some of the local town pages, filled with a lot of information. So I just wanted to say that in, in order to further educate yourself for Wednesday, totally recommend going to check those out, because they're definitely really good things to look at when you're deciding on what you'd like to support on Wednesday.
Thank you, Michael. Other further school board comments? Okay, Tammy?
Great. So I had some time away last week, from the back and forth that goes on between community members on social media, voting information pages, and I spent the last couple of days catching up. In doing so, I've decided to make some of my concerns public, because I think it's important to have transparency on all levels, from everyone involved in the budget process this year. It is expected and delivered from our administration transparency, and I expect the voters want it from the school board, and we've delivered it. And I expect it from the Budget Committee members, too. I'm appalled at the information and the spin that I'm seeing coming from many members of a taxpayer citizens group in our community, that happen to have a number of their members serving on the school district budget committee. It seems to me that there's a real conflict of interest going on here concerning these elected officials, their role on the budget committee. One is the committee chair. It doesn't seem that there's a separation of roles as to whether she's elect, writing as an elected official and the budget committee chair, or as a member of this taxpayer group. Just a quick look on the Newton Kingston taxpayer webpage, and a review of some of their minutes. It shows that the Budcom chair gives a report at their meetings on the school district budget process, and she also is the secretary for that group. However, since she's allowed as the budget committee chair to dissolve the budget committee bylaws, I guess it's kind of like the Wild, Wild West, where anything goes. And that's been something I noticed in my short time serving as the school board representative to the budget committee. Certain members on the committee are allowed to make disrespectful and false accusations regarding the school superintendent and the business administrator. Their remarks have called into question those professionals' effectiveness, their professionalism, as well as the accuracy of the data they are reporting. I 100% support the inquiry process, asking questions regarding information, and getting data to dig into the details that can help make informed decisions for the budget. But the behavior that's been exhibited and not controlled at the budget committee meetings has been rude, uncalled for, and unprofessional. Not to mention the poor example it sets for students who attend those meetings. The chair talks about the importance of supporting the teacher and support staff contracts, and valuing education, caring about the kids, but when at the last committee meeting, whoops, sorry, there was a motion to add $200,000 back into the budget to restore the high school guidance position that was suggested as a cut, and the math coordinator position, the chair did not support that motion. However, the night before, at the school board meeting, she had said she wanted to reach a compromise budget with the school board. Actions speak louder than words. Other concerns I want to share with the community is that the budget committee will have you believe that they studied the budget for 10 months. Well, they may have studied the current school year budget and spending for 10 months, but since the budget committee and the school board only received the budget the first week of November, and the budget committee finalized their budget figure on December 22nd, it seems to me that we only could have studied the FY 2017-18 budget for eight weeks. Then, despite the administration's recommendations and justification for the budget that was presented, the budget committee, supported by the chair, brought forward an operating budget that's nearly $1 million less than the superintendent's proposed, which, if passed at the polls in March, will severely affect the educational system, programming, and staffing at Sanborn. The community and our children deserve a budget that provides for all needs and quality education. We need a budget that will enable the school district to hire and retain staff, and expand upon and keep programming that parents expect and should be provided for their children. If the budget committee proposed budget is not amended at the deliberative session and pass at the polls in March, it will be detrimental to all of us living in this community. A quality school district not only is good for our children, it provides training and opportunities for the future leaders of our country, attracts people to our towns and neighborhoods, and retains and can increase our property value. To quote President Franklin Roosevelt, "The school is the last expenditure upon which America should be willing to economize." Please come out to support our children at the deliberative session next week, hear about the budget, the teacher and the support staff contracts that have been negotiated and are critical to passing this year, and make a difference. It's all about the kids. Thank you.
Other further school board comment? Okay, seeing none? Thank you, everyone. Michael, do you happen to have a student council report?
I do.
Because I want to admit, Michael, that you failed to inform us that there was a very important, very important dance last weekend on your prior council report.
There was.
I think there was. Wasn't it the semi?
I'm sorry, Cory.
As you get more into the weeds of your political game, wishing to go ahead, don't forget about all those other roots, Michael.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that the board wanted to be invited to the...
I just know the student body would have probably got one.
He didn't get invited, that's the problem.
I know. I definitely dress semi, that's for sure. I give you a hard time, Michael, because I only...
She's very... Your daughter was there. You know about it. The student council on the 27th decided on theme days for Winter Carnival. For those of you that don't know Winter Carnival, very similar to Homecoming, it's a rally all day, we play games, class versus class, versus class, versus class. So the theme days are, on Monday is Disney, which I'm pretty hyped about. Tuesday is Twin Day, so Abby and I will definitely be twinning. Wednesday is Fancy Day, I do that anyway. Thursday is Throwback Day, and that's between, you could dress up like you're six, or you could dress up like you're from the 80s, so either qualify. The other thing is, the prom chair has asked me to inform you, and I believe you're all very familiar with our prom chair, being Abigail Parrott, has asked me to inform the school board that the prom committee is, has, has selected a number of chaperones that they would like to attend prom this year, and in order to kind of break social norm, instead of just merely asking those people through an email or in person, they've decided to prompose to all of the chaperones something that is very fun to watch, because teachers don't know what's going on first, and then they realize. So I hope to get a video and definitely send that out, it's really funny. And they're always very clear to write chaperone, so it's not unclear that it's not a student going to prom with a teacher, because I don't know how many laws that would violate. Yeah, it does, it does always say chaperone, so no concerns there, but it is very fun to watch, and very fun to participate in.
Awesome.
And that is all.
Thank you very much.
Because that was, yeah, I have to inform you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. So wait, what was, is Friday any theme, like Disney, Twins, fancy, throwback?
Yes, oh, and Friday is, Friday is the different colors. Freshmen are orange, sophomores are pink, juniors are purple, and this year, seniors will be yellow.
Never changes.
Never changes.
All right, thank you, Michael.
What is the theme this year, though?
It's, I don't know what to call it. What are, what is it called? It's the survival shows. Like, I'm doing, our, our class is doing Survivor, one of the classes is doing Wipeout, the freshmen are doing, yeah, it's reality TV, but like, like hardcore reality TV. And our banner's going to be really awesome, and the seniors are totally going to win, so I'm sorry.
Awesome, Michael.
Had some controversy for you.
Oh, no.
Michael, do you have the activities, after-school activities?
There are, yes, I do.
Who's doing Homecoming?
Homecoming, we're not going to talk about Homecoming, Tammy. I believe there, we decided on Scavenger Hump. I'm heavily advocating for a small race with like, the cars that toddlers roll around in with their legs, you know? I want to see that. Yeah, like the little type cars. Exactly, I want to see that. There's a list of them, and I think it's been voted on, but I, I haven't had it documented, so I'll bring that to you next week.
Thank you, Michael. All right, great. Maybe you can share that list at the deliberative. School board subcommittee reports.
Budget asks for small type cars.
All right, finance report this evening? Do we want to blend this into the finance discussion of the facilities, or just straight-up finance right now? Just the finance?
Yeah, we just, this is going to be music.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah. The finance committee met this evening, and there was some, just housekeeping that needed to be done for the most part. There was line item transfers. The first one was for, we have a line item for homeless transportation district-wide. We have a dollar amount set for that, and so then when we have to accommodate, we move the money to the school where the student is attending, so we just moved money from the district-wide to the actual school on the transfers. Another one, it was just an honest mistake, they had put in on a line item under one, and it actually belonged under the high school, so they just switched that around on that. Then there was another one for professional services, and the services were at the Baky in the middle school, and in order to, it was for contracted services for the, at the Baky in the middle, and in order to accommodate that, they had to take money from the high school professional services. We also had out-of-state tuition, moved from the high school to the middle school, that was to support a new out-of-district program. And then there were three other budget adjustments for a contracted speech position at the DJ Baky. There was some changes that had to be made to the health insurance participation at the DJ Baky, and then there was also two fund paraprofessionals needed at the middle school. And then there was one more, which also involved a homeless student transportation, and there was no more money left on the district-wide line item, so our administrative had to look somewhere else in the budget. And as, every year, when the budget is developed, it's, this is what we think we're going to need for this particular line item, and when those line items fall short, they have to delve into the budget and look elsewhere. And unfortunately, they have to take from a line item that wasn't earmarked for the And unfortunately, they have to take from a line item that wasn't earmarked for the particular item that they're doing. So this particular one, we needed an additional $27,528 for student transportation for a homeless student, and we had to take it from one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine different line items in the budget. And that was it. And then we were handed the auditor's report, which there were no significant, there were no findings. It was just very well done.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Ross?
I do. I had a question and a comment. Is that okay?
Yes.
Finance, obviously dealing with money. Is there any discussion on that committee right now with some of the proposed budgets that have been set forth by the budget committee, the school board? No, okay. The other thing is, as the drama club president, as the chorus president, hearing that at times, obviously, we run out of money and because it's, it's a, really, a budget is the best guess as what you might need, there's a lot of discussion that goes into, obviously, the budget. And nobody wants to take away from the arts or other things. However, as a person who is leading two art-based groups, I know, and I've experienced this, that when it comes to funding math versus funding the drama club versus funding chorus, I do not foresee a lot of funds coming out from our core curricula. So when people say that they are not in favor of cutting the arts or not in favor of cutting sports or other co-curricular activities, there still is caution because those are the first things to get cut because they are not mandatory. That, and...
That's true.
It's just a concern to me that if...
It's the nature of the beast, Michael. You're right.
It's just the concern to me that if we don't have enough money to fund, from the budget to fund these core things, that my club is gonna be the first to get cut. And it's a real concern. There's no...
Mr. Broderick, how many months in advance, not to like, because this is a different discussion, but how many months in advance is that budget prepared for?
Will you say that?
Our budget, what we're working on right now, how many, how many months in advance are we preparing for? Eighteen months, right? The budget is eighteen, we're building a budget.
As soon as the vote, we start.
Right, right. So eighteen months. So the point being, Michael, just so you, you know, make sure you understand, like, we're doing a best guesstimate at current economics for something that's eighteen months out.
Yeah.
In all regards.
My point being is although those are funded, if the money runs short, those are the first things that we're going to lose. It's how it is.
We're very...
And that's why, when you look at the proposed operating budget for 2017-18, and it's right now a million dollars less than what the superintendent proposed, that's why my comments were what they were. We all need to be concerned about that.
I want everyone to be aware. I told all the time that nobody's...
The $200,000 for students for a homeless student, is that for one student?
It could be a million dollars, sir, but we, it can be anything. It's $28,000, by the way.
Whatever it is, is it for one student or...
We can't release that information. That's personal information. That's, that's all...
I don't know who it is, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, there's, yeah. All right. We're very fortunate. All right. Any other further discussion in the finance portion of this evening? Important.
Maybe if you give that kid a ride to school, you can have the money.
So we're gonna have students?
Michael, no, don't, yeah. Unfinished business. I'd like to move on to the deliberative session discussion. I have some stuff I'd like to share about the deliberative. Dr. Blake, do you have anything in particular you wanted to start? Okay. So as Michael alluded to, in our opportunity here to inform the community and to give them some hard anecdotal facts, I'm not sure how much the school board has seen. I know I haven't been, we've been putting together, there's a lot of numbers and information here, and I'd like to ask that we take some attention to this. There's been four different reports that have gone out. There'll be a fifth one now. What's that? So what I've been sharing with the community, I just want to first take a step back here and recognize that the information... Go back, start over. Let me get my notes. All right. You guys, okay. So the first one that went out was an enrollment report. And, because we've heard a lot of stuff about declining enrollments, as Dr. Brown has indicated on numerous occasions, and it's true. We have to question ourselves, like, what's happening? And why is the number we have today what it is and how does it compare? It's extremely intriguing. So I went ahead again, because we're working with data that's available to us, data that's factual, and that's a three-year period right now, and that's the FY 2000, FY 14, FY 16. So it's fall of 2013 to June of 2016, not FY 17, the one we're in right now. Because that data is not available to the state, or it's not all there. To do a comprehensive analysis, a comprehensive understanding of the information, how do we compare buckets? So the cost per pupil, we all know, pains me because that's a, that's a discussion that we can't compare, especially with regards to your final comment about transportation. That one line item there impacts that cost per pupil. So that cost per pupil, transportation fees. So needless to say, the, the studies and the reports have been done, have been all taken from state data. So all of it's all available in the state. I've aligned it all and I'll share all this information with you if you'd like. So it's really hard for us to compare ourselves to other communities because right now there are over 160 public schools in the state of New Hampshire. Of those 160, less than 45 of them have a PK to 12 program like Sanborn Regional School District does. We all get that, right? So when you want, when there's, there's 160, there's plenty, in order to go ahead and adequately compare, we have to think about brick and mortar. We have to think about pupil size. We have to think of grades. What are we offering for services? Right? So we offer PK to 12.
Pre-K.
Pre-K, pre-K, sorry. So we offer pre-K to 12. Less than 45 school districts statewide offer that, of the 160-plus public schools. Facts. So needless to say, so something else I want to look at, and something I shared with the community here, is that elementary schools are defined as having grades K to eight. Kindergarten is an option. Middle schools are defined as having combination of grades four to eight, or junior high, which I went to, with any combination of grades seven to nine. You know? Needless to say, I just taking a look at our 10-year enrollment comparison now. You can see on this graph here, there's a downward cycle, downward state. And so up above, you've got a graph of the state, and that's down below. The facts are that the state enrollments in 2006, 2007 were 195,901 students. Ten years later, it's dropped by nearly, it's by 14-plus percent. Sanborn in that same 10-year period has dropped less than 12, less than 12%. So we're below the state trend here. Okay? It's true. Obviously, when this building and everything went into existence, there was 1,900-plus students that were looking to come, that were here. Now we're obviously much lower than that. It's a statewide challenge. And if you, and if you look at this data and you look at these reports, every which way you turn, we're doing, like, we're not above. And going back to the questions and comments, so, you know, if you look at these reports, you'll see that there's 15 less students in the K grade, you know, every which way we go through. So I went through, did the high school, middle school, even...
You're not above. What do you mean by that?
We're always...
We're below...
We're well below average in enrollment, like, we're, so let me actually just end up on this one. This is, you know, in this instance of enrollments, right? This is the fact to know. And if you look at everything from a grade perspective, take a look at that. I'm now gonna go over to my second report, Dr. Brown. And I did, I did pass a note for all those who's watching, saw me write something, flipped over Nancy Ross, because I needed to make sure I heard what I thought I heard. You said at 7:42 PM, that's Sanborn's average class size is below the state average. Yep. So I went ahead and did that. And it's really hard, and we should all remind ourselves, it's really hard to compare ourselves with other communities, first off, again. But from an average class size, the state only recognizes grades one through eight. You can't compare the high school. Why? Why? Michael, best guess? Why can't you compare?
I have no idea.
They have different classes. Greater classes in the...
Courses. Thank you, Ms. Ross.
Scheduling. Scheduling is different.
So, right. I mean, I...
Well, not only that, four-by-four block, the regular 50, 55-minute. I mean, modified block.
Variable after variable, right? So what we can compare is apples to apples, and that's grades one, three. So from a class size summary, it's true, the average class size for grades 18, one to eight, in the state are 16.8. The lowest in the state, Errol, in New Hampshire, 6.9. The highest, 23.1. So we rank right now, our average class size in grades one, three, over the last three years, this is all last three years data, 18.7. We're 95 out of 138. We're 1.9 more students than the average. We're more. Our class sizes are bigger. Of the remaining, of the 95 through, happy 138, 20.3 average of the remaining four through schools. So you can see that's planned day. So we're not too far off from there. So if you get to grades one through eight, you can see again, we have 1.98 in grades one through eight in three-year average. So this was a change. I went ahead and did something that was pretty intense here. I went ahead and took a look at, to inform myself, going back to the story as Ms. Collier indicated, I want to make sure I'm supporting something I know I can support, that number going forward. And that number going forward is clearly indicating here, every which way I turn, you'll see in these subsequent reports, our class sizes are greater, grades one through eight. Over the three-year change period, you can see that the class size changed, they go to 2.1. So we've actually, over the last three years, our actual class sizes went up to 2.1. So looking at grades one to two, same difference. Grades three to four, same difference. We're just up, up, up across board. And so I'm just gonna land here for what's worth. Again, the average class size in New Hampshire is 16.8. The average class size here in Sanborn over the last three years is 18.7. We have nearly two more students in each of our classrooms in grades one through eight than the state average. So I want to hear things that we're saying, that the state, that we're below, that's not true. That's gotta, we gotta be factual. We're pouring the information out there, it's gotta be factual. And I believe you mean. So then I'm gonna go ahead and look at the third report that I pulled together. This one here is the, I don't know, I'm tired, student ratio. So again, very...
Student-to-teacher ratio?
Student-to-teacher ratio. Extremely challenging because gotta look at this two different ways, and I want to make sure, again, slice the data, be comprehensive with it. The three-year student-teacher ratio from fall 2013 and to fall 2015 or June 2016, again, looking at 161 districts statewide, that don't, not all those districts are like us. Remember, not everyone has K through 12, PK to 12. The student-teacher ratio is 12. The three-year change in the student-teacher ratio, see the little person's cut off there? It's, the student-teacher ratio change went down in the last three years by .17. So not even close.
Is that K through eight or is it K through 12?
This is K through eight. I mean, no, this is K through 12. Thank you very much. Thank you, K through 12. This is K through 12 because we do have that data.
It's based on enrollment, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, it's based upon state reports.
Oh, okay.
You've gotta remember, these are state reports and state data the state's providing to us.
You can then compare all of them together.
Okay, so it's, yeah.
So, and as Sanborn, how do we compare it to that? Our student-teacher ratio is 10.8 student-teacher ratio. We're in the middle, again, talking district-wide, statewide.
What's the ratio with Sanborn?
10.8. Districts one to eight, and this is important, if you look at this, districts one through 84, which is obviously below us, they're less than 10.8. Their average is 9.0. Quite the, you know, the one through 84 below us are averaging 9.0. The districts above us are 12 points higher.
Higher student-teacher ratio, the ones above us.
Right. But, but look here, it's very hard, again, everyone, to compare apples to apples because Little Town Errol has only 4.4 students-to-teacher ratio. My daughter-in-law, my cousin-in-law, I guess, I don't know, whatever branch or tree it is, she graduated with 18 students up in Ashland, graduating class. Can't compare. They're in this number. Highest average, 14.9 in Hudson. Now, let's only talk about the schools that are PK to 12, to answer your question, Ms. Mary. Forty-two districts statewide, 12.3 ratio. Over the last three years, we have a change of .63, cutting off more of a person. About half of a person's changed. Where do we sit? 10.8, like our numbers were before, we're 13th out of those 42. Again, before, if you looked at that number, that was 9. what? 9.0 went to 9.7 now, one through 12, 12.6 above us. Moltenboro, you can see, clearly changed it, but the lowest is 8.3. Hudson, again, of course, 14.9. So in short summary, we're in the middle. We're in the middle with student-teacher ratio, but yet, once again, thinking that we have already two students more in that classroom, especially K-8. Fourth report I did, which got some radio play online, was teacher average salary comparison. And just ask everyone to take a quick look at this. It's true. Right? Can we all agree? It's tough. My wife's a teacher, so I know. Have you questioned how much, so when we go to the polls this week and the community that's hopefully seeing some of this? Deliberative, pardon me. And when they do get to the polls, though?
And the polls in March, yeah.
How much, how much have you valued your children's teachers today, yesterday? I really question the following teachers, again, teachers' average salary over a three-year period, being very concise with all of these being the same. The following data is can taken from the state website. My question to us and the question to the community, would they like, so, would you like the school board to acknowledge we have not taken care of our teachers? Because I think the data is showing that we haven't. And I'm questioning the community, will they be supporting both the professional and support staff contracts, like both the budget committee and the school board have voted for? So...
Can I go back to that last one? Are you asking the school board to acknowledge that the school board has not taken care of our children? That's how that could happen.
That's a question.
No, this is a question.
I understand that, but see how that could be interpreted? You know, would you like the school board to acknowledge that we, the school board, have not taken care of our children's teachers? I don't think that's the question you're asking. I think you're talking, we, the community.
Yeah, you're right. Replace that.
Be careful with that one.
Fair enough. So taking a look at the average teacher salary, I think, Ms. Broderick, I mean, you're right. Average teacher salary pay. So statewide, the average teacher salary pay, again, is 161. 55, 7. You can see Sanborn's, we're $5,000-plus less than the statewide, statewide public schools. Where do we fit? Sanborn's 61st out of 161. Timberlane, not too far from us, is 881 below the average. Bedford, which we've heard has become Sanborn West, Sanborn East, they're west of us, so they're $1,000 above the average. Brentwood is 12-plus thou, nearly $13,000 above the average.
That's their elementary school, right?
Yes. Elementary.
Right.
$13,000 at the elementary school, more than we're paying. Exeter?
Is that the middle school, high school?
This is, again, this is all, yes, this is all grades, but you bring up the more important point because you know Brentwood doesn't have a K to 12. Brentwood has a...
K to five.
And their average salary for K to five is 68.5. That's intense.
Yes, sir.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
First thought I have is, what step level are you using? That top step?
Um, sir, this is average, teacher average salary, average teacher salary.
But, but does that take into...
It's folded in.
No, I understand. But does that take into consideration years of experience of teachers so that we have more on, say, steps three versus that they have step six? I'm just saying, that's gonna skew your number, if you're just folding in an average. You're saying this is gonna be the argument you're gonna run into when you bring that up. You're saying, this is gonna be the argument you're gonna run into when you bring that up, I mean.
Well, no, hey, great question, this is not taking, this is what's on the state's website, and if you were to call, you were to say, what's the average salary that you're paying your staff, that's what you're seeing.
But we are, we have to, maybe I'm misinterpreting this. We have to hear, come up with the poss- the possible questions and our answers for those questions.
Yeah.
You don't want to be seen blind-sided or not have an answer.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so it is important to say, this is, the steps are, like Ms. Bennett said, folded in. They're, they're, this is what's being reported to the state, and everyone's at different steps. So I just want to go on.
But if you tell me as a teacher that I might someday reach that salary.
Right, right, and if, exactly. Now, something that we'll note here is, we're losing staff on a regular basis, we had fair amount that left last year, so our starting salary has gone down. Like, we have, that, that's dropped, our, our average is dropping, because we're not, because of that step thing.
But you see how they can use that again, say, well, we're really not, because we've got new teachers, that's why it's skewing the numbers. We're actually higher than portrayed, because we have younger teach, uh, less experienced, you see what I mean?
I do, but the equally valid point is that we haven't passed contracts in the past few years, that's equally a balancing point, so.
My point is to be prepared for that question, that, that's.
Yeah, I mean, you're right.
And we have to compete in this region for staff. And, you know, one of the things we looked at finance tonight is the contracted service that we have to pay for, because we can't find a staff member. So, we need to be competitive to fill our positions, and we're competing with districts around us that pay their teachers and their staff more.
You can't do that, though, if you're cutting the budget, you can't do that, if you're, if you're not supporting the teacher's contract, you're always gonna lose staff, and you're never gonna go ahead and go up with, onboarding a new employee is always more expensive and to, than retaining. Onboarding a new school board member, as you know, there's a life cycle, there's a learning curve, sir, right? So we have to say, while these numbers are below, they're below because we haven't taken care of them. They're below because they're leaving to communities that are supporting them.
Infamous quote from Dr. Blake, we have to run it like a business.
So let's take a step back here now, the average teacher. You're right. So again, looking elsewhere, I just want to take a quick step back in looking at some of the stuff. Looking at the salary pay change, you know, you can see statewide over the last three years, this goes to, more towards your point, Mr. Broderick, we're losing staff, just like other school districts are. A three-year average teacher pay salary change statewide, the pay child, pay change, went down statewide, less than two thousand dollars, we went down less than thirty-eight, nearly thirty-eight hundred. Which means that we're losing staff to other districts, and they're making more money, obviously. But you can see, other districts are not nearly as bad as we are.
So our staff have lost, on average, three thousand seven hundred dollars a year.
Yeah.
Compared to the statewide average, and, gotcha.
Very challenging, so good question that came up today, or saw that people were looking at this information, they wanted to say, well, compare us to pupil size. Right? So like, the truth of the matter is, this is great, and again, you can see this one sixty-one, which, it's true, in certain towns and small communities, they're fighting for staff, like, they don't want, this clearly shows that Brentwood wants to pay for good staff for their small school. Right? And we know Brentwood doesn't have the population that we have. And so someone asked in the community, well, let's compare ourselves to a school district that has similar pupil size. I bring up this. So of course I looked at it, we have our forty-two schools that we compare to, because the brick and mortar suggests that they have a middle school, elementary, all that stuff, like we do PK to twelve. So if you look here, we're obviously here, and again, this is data from FY sixteen. We're looking at our salary, which you just saw, fifty thousand seven hundred seven. You'll notice that Monatnock Regional School District, which is on the other side of the state, MRSD, know them pretty well, actually, they have seventeen hundred twenty-six students, which is obviously, by my calculation, that's a difference of forty, thirty-seven less students than we have. Their average teacher salary is two thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars more than us. I also want to remind you that they have a hundred and fifty-nine less students at the high school than we do. Hundred fifty-nine less students, that means they have less classes. So we delve deep into these numbers, like, ooh. Average teacher salary, so that means they have more elementary students. I know that for fact, again, because again, I've done a lot of work with them. Just bump it up one more, go up to Kirshaj. Again, this is all sorted by this column right here, pupil size. Kirshaj Regional, eighteen hundred eight students. They're, they have, on average, a hundred fifty-nine, wow, that's a pretty good, close, like, teacher count there. Oh, actually, I just totally overskip something. They have a hundred and thirty-four teachers, FTEs, they're averaging fifty-three plus. Mind you, they have this many students. It's sense, but, but look at Kirshaj. Kirshaj has a hundred fifty-nine, their average salary is eight, eighty, nearly eighty-eight hundred, or eight points, eight thousand plus more than us. So I guess what I'm trying to point out here is, every single layer of the onion that I've been turning over and slicing into, I s- more and more and more support the budget that we put forward. So these subsequent reports that I'm doing, and looking at all this information, I'm now ranking budgets. So Carol knows that she's got homework, she's gotta get some staff. This, the budgets aren't available to us online, so we have to now manually go out and get budget information. So the end goal here is to say, how does Kirshaj budget look over the last three years compared to our budget? And oh, by the way, what was the actuals and what was returned? And so in doing this, we're gonna get a true picture. And again, every which way I turn here, there's only eleven school districts in the state of New Hampshire that we can compare to, of the forty-two, that their staff salary is less than ours. So that means there's thirty other school districts of the forty-two that are making a lot more money than we are. Thirty of the forty-two, and now, if I wanted to, I could probably quickly aggregate that, and I think I might, actually, because we're gonna have fun here.
And math is fun.
Be still my heart.
But, so I just want to say. Think I just indicated that I'm working on that, it's not out there, it's really hard. I wish that that was information that was provided. I wish that was information that when we started making discussions and cutting our own budget, that we knew that information. I'm gonna have to. It's a good question, sort of, it's tough. And this is a problem at the state level.
You're talking going, doing your homework to a whole new level.
Yeah, well, if I'm gonna make an informed decision, I'm gonna make it right. It's true, sir, you have to. Okay, the thirty-one districts above us are making, on average, sixty, thirty-one of the school districts in the state are making more, six plus, six point six more than we are.
Sixty-six hundred dollars.
Sixty-six hundred dollars.
And that's, the thirty-one above us, the average of?
Yeah, the thirty-one above us, and, and I, I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't want to be quartered on that right now. So if anyone's writing that down and says that's what it is, I need to triple-check, quadruple-check my information, because I believe you me. I'm tired, as it says on my coffee cup, I don't trust that number, but it's at minimum sixty-six hundred. So I, I'm asking us here as a school board, when we go to the deliberative next week, and as Michael indicated, what is the homework we're all doing, and how are we gonna help support our budget? Albeit the warrant articles that we've passed, petition and so forth. What is the message we're putting out there? How do we support this, and how do we want to go ahead and change the culture? Because quite frankly, how can we be looking at this and saying we're overpaying? When, every which way, and when we make comments like, that we're below the average classroom size, we're not, we're not.
Dr. Brown, what data are you using to get your information to say that we are below the average classroom size?
I think I was using the students per teacher ratio numbers, probably. But no one's talking about huge reductions in our pre-K to eight class, we're talking about the high school master schedule, looking at that. That's my focus.
You're looking at the high school schedule to say that we're below the state average?
The sizes of these class sections are beginning to get kind of small.
But what, how are you getting the other high school state average class sizes? Because Corey's been trying to get that information, and we can't find it.
There's no student teacher ratio for the high school.
I'm just wondering where you're finding your information.
Um, the high school master schedule I received.
But then you're comparing oursons, then you're comparing us to the state.
Um, I'm looking at the numbers for our classes, I'm looking at the mandated state maximums, I'm looking at the board's maximum for class size.
Well, those are policies that we have and other school districts have in the state.
So how do you guys respond to the fact that we're below the students to teacher ratio for the state?
We're not.
We're not.
It's twelve point three versus ten point eight. What you just said.
We have more students to teacher.
It's twelve point three and ten point eight.
I thought it was twelve.
Twelve, twelve, yeah, ten point eight, Sanborn, and twelve for the I mean, for, for the.
You're saying average class size.
Maybe I wrote, did I write it wrong?
Your comments were about average class size, and then when you look at the average class sizes here.
No, I can definitely bring the numbers to the, and look them up again and give them to you, where I got those numbers.
It's just something that you've been saying over and over again.
Yes, I have been saying that, and I haven't reexamined the numbers on the state website for a while, but I did get those numbers from the website.
But for high school?
For high school, and as I understood it, it was the average class size, and it didn't specify just the high schools.
You know, that, that, it serves us no purpose to go, I think what you're saying, Corey, is that this is more or less the presentation that you're gonna be giving.
I think it serves a purpose, Mr. Brown.
No, 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 I, I, no, I, I guess I'm trying to stay on, on why you're putting this, this, this is part of the, this is what you're gonna be talking about at the deliberative session.
I'm ramping up, just like we all should be, I'm hearing facts, I'm hearing concerns that we have declining enrollments. Well, yes, you're right, Dr. Brown, there are declining enrollments throughout the state. The state average over the last three years is fourteen percent, we're twelve percent. I'm, I'm hearing that we have smaller classroom sizes than the rest of the state.
Your argument for large budgets, it's that our rate of decrease is not as great as the state average? Is that your argument?
Well, what I would like us as a team to quantify is, and this is before we go, is, are other districts' budgets declining because enrollments decline, or are the budgets going up because they're, they're going up? Do we know that answer?
You're asking for causation here.
I'm ask, I asked a quick question, do we know that?
We don't know that.
Do we know that?
We don't know that.
Do we know? Do you know?
We know the demographics, there are reduced family sizes, we know that demographic.
So my point being here is, I'll ask a question, like, do we know if enrollments are going down? Yes, we already get that other way, are other budgets going down because enrollment's going down? Do we know that?
We don't know what the other budgets are, you already.
But that's where we have to be very, it's extremely relevant.
How's it relevant?
It's very relevant.
This is, this is the me-too clause that we, we use down the tunnel, this is the me-too clause. They're doing this, so we should do this, they're doing this, so we should do this.
Then why do people say?
Because we have our own budget and our own ability to pay the costs. All right? So now, I, I understand what you're saying, but I gotta tell you, Corey, I look at this, and, and the huge flaw, in, in my opinion, of a presentation, which I think to be careful for, is that we don't know our years of experience from our school district, which means natural, let's assume, and I hate to use this word, but if, if we have the turnover like you're talking about, then our teachers on step have to be lower in step, which is gonna affect the average salary. So if our steps are down here, and another school are up here, then we're gonna show a lower average salary because of the numbers we have at the lower steps. So you gotta be careful when you say, we're this much below, because we've gotta get that data in there to see that. We may have that, you know, you may be one hundred percent correct, but I'm saying, that's a big question to me.
Yeah.
That, that may or may not hold true, because
Right.
Your statement would be true if we were only bringing in brand-new teachers with no experience.
Well, but we still don't know the step pays, and how many are on each step.
But when we bring folks in, we bring them in, I want the best person available, regardless of years of experience
Right.
in front of our kids, so we've hired staff that are at the top of the salary schedule.
But if we don't know the numbers of steps, and how many are on each step, then we really can't calculate the average salary. We could have higher, we could have lower, we don't know, is what I'm saying, so we have to be careful when we present these things.
I have a question.
Dr. Brenner?
This may be a very stupid question and naive, but we have a chart, do we not, of steps? And step one starts at X amount of dollars, yes? And step two, and step three, step sixteen, whatever we go up to. So if you take the average, you take the starting and the end, and how many in between? So isn't, so it doesn't matter how many are at that, wouldn't it just be the average of the, the chart itself versus who's at it?
So, so look at the median.
So, you, so here's a key, like, I then.
Why?
Because it's the numbers on each.
So that's what I'm asking, what's, what is published, is it the median or the average?
No, the, the calculation that's, that's reported to the state is, we have to, well, actually, I think we, we, we may present both to the state. Describe, as you just suggested, beginning salary, top of the scale.
So, so behind me, right now, you'll see, I've been doing more homework and looking at us compared to salary schedules, and I started doing this back at the negotiations period. Needless to say, you are correct, Mr. Broderick, that we have to be cognizant that, while, yes, we have new staff members coming in, and we have staff members leaving, we have to question, what does that impact on education? And when you're hiring.
Now, we're in a different question, and a very important question.
But, but the truth of the matter is, we hear all too often, the cost per pupil, the enrollment size, we hear a lot of these things. So what I'm trying to prove a point here to all of us, you have to look at each individual data element and come to a conclusion, if I was just to compare this apple to that apple, where would Sanborn sit? If I was to compare this orange to this orange, where would we sit? And so that's what challenges me and pains me about how this exercise of providing a budget to the community between both our board and the budget committee's board, I question and question and question. I know, what is, you know, we, we, I know we have this thing of, what, what can we afford? But if other districts are taking our staff to a trained, and they're now going there in a higher step, like Bedford? I mean, again, that's happening on a regular basis. How are we gonna track that staff member back? How are we gonna go ahead and retain that child who's getting an acceptance letter to Central Catholic? Because they have more course offerings. How are we gonna continue, like, on this, we're in, obviously, a really challenged downward cycle spin of, we're losing students because we're not offering enough curriculum, but that's because our classroom size at the high school can't be below a certain level. It's a downward cycle. It's, it's, so it's obviously a challenge, but I, I just caution and think about every data element. That's what I've been working hard on.
Absent of fa- of facts.
Which I have.
Yeah, intuitive reasoning comes in. And intuitive reasoning says, if we've lost a large number of teachers who are coming in a lower pay, we don't know what pay grade they're coming in, we don't know what the other pay grades are, so intuitive reasoning is going to say, you know, of course we're lower. Now, that doesn't mean it's good logic, I'm just saying that the person who doesn't know that is going to, you know, absent information, your brain plugs something in, which gets you in trouble a lot of times, we've all experienced that. But I'm just saying, be careful with that, and make sure you have your, I'm trying to help you out here, make sure you have your answers when, when those come up, that's all. You see, you see where I'm coming from.
I do, and, and if that question comes up, I'll say, but then, if we're losing staff, and then we have to hire more, and then we have to invest in those new staff to train them, we need to take care of, there's a cost factor, and we need to take care of those staff members by passing a contract. We need to have a budget that adequately supports a quality education program in our school district. And that's something that comes from the professionals that we hire, our business administrator, the superintendent, the administrators, and that's who we have to fall on to understand, what do we need? And to create a culture in the community that stands. And to create a culture in the community that stands behind education and these other communities that pay their teachers higher. I work in the Exeter School District. There's not an issue with them passing budgets and their budgets go up every year. I'll find out what they are this school year. I'll go get, I'll get them tomorrow.
I guess my counsel is...
And we can compare those to what has happened here in our school district as far as budgets go and teachers' contracts.
My counsel is be careful that we're not so focused on, on, um, yeah, offense that we don't pay attention to some defense. You see what I'm saying?
Totally.
Absolutely. I'm trying to pay attention to all.
No, I understand. I just...
And I think, I think a larger issue that looms out here is from your original statement that said, your question, which was, I didn't like the wording, but, and I think you'll fix it. Because as a community collectively, over the years, by not passing contracts and not passing budgets, this is where we are. And there are consequences all along the way. And at some point, it just, you just reach that point where you will not be able to attract staff who can go 10 miles to the south in Massachusetts and get $15,000 more right now. And you won't be able to attract administrators who aren't going to beat their hearts out like our people have to work with the means that they have to support the kids when it's a battle against the community that doesn't support on the economic level. I mean, I'm not saying people who don't drive their kids to, you know, games and dances and all that kind of stuff. But the community as a whole, what Tammy just said at Exeter, there's no question about passing budgets. No question. It's, it's just in the community culture that apparently, I mean, I don't know Exeter, but it seems like this battle doesn't come up on a yearly basis. I have a friend who's in the school board in, where's Dover? Is that Oyster River? Dover's Dover.
It's Dover.
Oh.
Oyster River.
Oyster, he's, he's in Oyster River School Board. There's... They're doing just fine.
I, I hope we can all just take a minute, be cognizant of the troubling fact that the school board was just capable of having a discussion, talking, facing the challenges using facts such as we've had incredible, what is the word, uh, when teachers leave?
Turnover?
Turnover, yes. I, I usually remember it, but right now my brain was incredible turnover. We haven't passed budgets several times over the last 10 years. That, that's so troubling to me that, that we were just capable of leading a discussion based on, and, and I hope, just based on that, and I hope that, I hope that we can become one of those communities that doesn't have a problem saying contracts, yes, budgets, yes. I hope that this is not just a conversation. It's, it's important that we pass the contract this year, but I'd say it's just as important, if not more important, that we continue to pass the budget, not the budget, the contract for years to come. Both, both of course. But, I mean, we always need our teachers and we will always need our teachers. And we shouldn't, we shouldn't even be capable of having this, this discussion using this information. It shouldn't be a concern that the numbers are skewed because we've lost so many teachers over the last couple of years. And it's really sad.
To tell them you can't talk.
Right. All right. Thank you. Your public comments were earlier. Thank you, sir. All right.
Okay.
Yes, Dr. Brown? Relative to the deliberative?
Well, there are ways to increase class size slightly as enrollment continues to decline to get better performance and reward teachers. But unfortunately, our contract negotiations were non-public, so I can't divulge my excellent ideas for that.
But they were excellent. I'm sure they were.
Reform, but they, they're coming. So please don't fret about teachers being underpaid. I completely understand that, one. And two, there's a narrative in the room right now that teachers are leaving because, purely because of the contract. And I've been getting an earful at the transfer station from teachers and former parents who are leaving for other reasons than the contract and pay. So, discipline and so forth. So let's not continue to push one message. There are many reasons that we're losing people.
I would like to, at this time, while we're in the deliberative discussion, ask how we here as a school board, how, um, how are we going to, from here to next week, we've got less than a week here now, help support this? We know we obviously can't officially put things in the building, Ms. Pierce.
Sorry about that, Sheila.
That's okay, Sheila.
That's okay.
Stand on the side of the road, okay? Just wear gloves.
It's the thought that counts.
It is. But how are we? I, I mean, I would love nothing more than maybe ask Dr. Brown. I know you go, I'd like to see you maybe holding up a sign because I know you've done this before, at the transfer station, vote for the teacher's contract. You, you know, you voted for here.
Kevin Singer.
I don't think, I don't think we need to get what we're going to do individually.
Are you trying to herd cats, Corey?
Trying to get us to support what we are here for.
What are you, what's your, what are you going to do? What's your recommendation?
What the heck have I been doing it behind you?
Okay, no, that's fine. So you're going to do that, all right? And you're going to present that at the deliberative session. That's fine. But to us people that, you know, I mean, I don't know what I'm going to do. People talk to me, I'm going to say, hey.
Well, you go to the breakfasts on Monday, right?
How did that go this Monday?
I got up and talked as usual.
He got up and talked, but he talked about the town meeting on Saturday and he blew off Wednesday.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Yeah, yeah, you did.
All right, no one fighting.
Then you misheard.
No, your words were Saturday is important.
I hope.
No, I said the deliberative sessions are important.
And he...
And I talked about Saturdays first and I talked about Wednesdays.
All right. So can I ask a favor?
Then watch out for the parking. Remember that?
Guys, do me a favor. All right. No one fighting.
No one fighting.
It doesn't sound hostile. It sounds like a nice conversation.
She called me she wouldn't marry me tonight. What can I say?
I need to see conflict.
If I were your wife, I wouldn't marry you.
All right, all right, girls and boys. So I, I am herding sheep and I am herding cats. I am interested in us supporting why we're here. We're elected officials to go ahead and promote what we're putting out there. I do advise and ask, I, I would love nothing more than some help with some of these like numbers. And I understand I'm, I'm interested in doing this, but I just ask if there's anything you could do to help support the purpose and cause of the school board and what you're elected for, please do so. It's our, it's why we got elected. All right.
What, and I ask, go ahead.
Go ahead, Sheila.
So if I can't put that sign up because I offended somebody, can we, can we put these on the table to have people take them if they want them?
It's athletic boosters, right?
It's, it's just something saying the deliberation session.
But you're of the, you're, you're...
I'm asking at the games.
For the athletic, on the athletic boosters table.
Does it say vote for? Or is that a no-no?
Does it say vote for?
Does it say support or vote for?
It just says that it's, it explains that there's going to be a warrants article, but it doesn't say to vote for it. Okay? It does say, um, the deliberation session, when it is, why we're having it, the time, the place. Um, it says, "We will be urging voters to support both contracts this year for the support staff and the teachers."
So can I put one out that says we should not?
I think...
That's the issue, really.
I think if you remove, if you removed, "We're urging people to support" and just said, "This is informational. Please come and learn."
Can you say the school board has voted to support?
I didn't mention any boards here. There's no board mentioned up there.
Keep it, keep it.
Here's the problem, Michael. I, I'm going to give a couple of them. Number one, I pay, I pay taxes for this and I don't agree with that. Why are you using my tax dollars in this building? Whereas somebody else who's for it says, "Fine." But you know what happens? When you go down this road, next time it'll be reversed. I'm for something and the other guy's against it.
All right, well, that's on just the...
You can't win, all right? You can only lose. We're trying to get credibility for the school board and the school district. And you, you know, it's, it's, in the long run, it's going to hurt us. Stay out of it. What we do, you're right. What we, what are we going to do individually out there? Well, knowing me, I talk to a picture. I'm going to be talking to a lot of people, you know. It's okay to talk to a picture. It's when it talks back, that's when you have a problem. The thing is, you know, you talk to people, you know, you phone some people, you, you know, talk it Monday. You know, I'll be able to talk about it because we won't be meeting. See, the deliberative session for the town is Saturday. It's not till Wednesday and I'll be able to talk Monday about it.
Peter is simultaneously the angel and the devil on the shoulder.
No, that's why we love each other.
Any questions in like this new subject matter?
Yeah, my question for, for Dr. Blake, it's regarding that piece of paper she has. If it's on the high school athletic boosters table, it's not on the school board table?
It still shouldn't be political.
All right, well, that's, I just wanted to...
It should be informational only.
If it's informational, you know, come to the deliberative session, that's, that's fine. But I think as soon as you say support, one way or the other, I think that's where we get into hot water.
Okay. Then I have a question. How, what kind of language do you then bring to students?
You don't. We, the school board, don't.
You do.
There's a saying.
You can bring anything you want.
What, I say we because I like to include everybody. So what information then do I bring to students? Because it's going to be objective.
There's two things, all right? There's a good, good rule of thumb. Don't talk about religion or politics because you can't win either way. Right? You know what I mean? You never talk about religion and politics in a public forum or in, in, in a group setting because you're going to offend somebody.
You want to say something, Nancy?
I was just going to say that. Michael, you can report back to your students, anything that occurs here, it's public. So you can certainly tell them, if you check the website, you will see that the school board supports this and, and that and whatnot. And then urge them to go to the deliberative.
Sure. I just, I've given, I've given as many people as possible a date. I've said tell your parents to come, tell your friends that are 18 to come, if you have any college students. I have not said, "Support this, support that. I don't agree with that. I think it's partisan and I think that that's completely disagreeable."
They have your opinion. You can tell them.
I can tell them my opinion. I try to refer from doing that. However, I, but if I say, for instance, would it be appropriate for me to say, "Here's the default, here's the school board recommended, here's the budget committee's recommended"? Or should I just leave that out of the conversation completely? It is facts, but is it?
It's facts and public information.
Factual public information.
All right, fine.
All right. Dr. Blake, Ms. Capola, any comments about the deliberative? Anything further?
What are you looking for us to present that night?
Yourself well professionally. I'm just kidding. And maybe me with gifts of some sort.
I just want to add to, to Michael's comment there about what he can say. That's two different issues. They're looking to put out literature to, you know, and it's, it's in a school setting with something, you know, unrelated. So I see somebody in the grocery store and they ask me, I'm going to tell them exactly how I feel.
So if I printed out a bunch of pieces of papers that said, "Here's the information," and started handing out to students during school hours, I, I don't know if that would, I mean, obviously not when I'm in class. That, that's obviously a no-go. But I'm talking like lunch, "Hey, this is happening. I have served on this board for several months. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me." Hand him a piece of paper and walk away. That's okay? Okay. All right. All right. I'm going to move on. What do I want you to do? Just come prepared with any questions that may need to be asked, answered.
Show up and ask questions.
Yep.
What time do you want us to?
Six thirty.
The downbeat's at seven, right?
Yeah. So, I, I'm... Six thirty. Show up at six thirty at minimum.
At the least.
I sit, I sit in the audience, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Um, all right. Thank you very much, everyone. All right, um, long slide deck, bear with me. All right, so moving on to the rest of our, um, sorry, guys. All right, um...
New business.
Our new business overnight field trip. Dr. Blake?
In your school board packets this evening, we have a request for an overnight field trip to Springfield, Mass. The annual Key Club convention for our students. It's about 30 students, three chaperones, 240 miles. It is an annual trip that they go on.
That I wish I could...
I make a motion to support.
I'll second.
So that's a motion by Ms. Glock, seconded by Ms. Ross. Any further questions or concerns by all means for the board? Again, I know this is one that I've floated on a couple of years in a row now. So, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Next agenda items. Facilities usage?
Yes, so just on to, to begin a conversation about our facilities usage because over time, it's, it's gotten to be a problem for the fire department, the police department and our own staff. Over, over the last couple of years, we've had a number of instances where we've had large groups look to, to rent or utilize the facilities. Some student-related, others not directly student-related. And we've run into problems such as crowd control. We have too many people in the building. We have, we've had issues, significant issues with there not being enough parking. We've had people blocking the driveways, parking on lawns. We've had them out on 111 out here. And in many cases, it's not even stuff that's related to the school. And then we as, as administrators are getting phone calls from the police and fire saying, "What's going on in your building?" And we really have no idea because it's an outside group that's, that's coming in. So the, the concern is, is to the point where it's more than we can manage. And so we've had some conversations with the police and, and fire and, um, we'd like to begin the conversation about scaling back on how much the building is used by these outside groups. And we have, we have groups coming in from Derry to use our high school for, for cheerleading events. It has nothing to do with our kids necessarily. They come in, they use the building. I think that was one of the most recent events that, that we had issues with. And, and there were, you know, we had overcrowding issues in the building and we had significant parking issues where the police and fire were ready to close, close down the event.
Gymnastics.
Gymnastics, are those? Okay. You know, so it's raising a lot of concerns and the revenue that it generates is not...
Can I add something to that?
Well, me first.
Yeah.
Well, what is it, what are you looking to do first off so we're all clear?
Yeah, I just want to, I, I wanted to begin the conversation. We don't have to make any decisions this evening, but just wanted to bring it up as a discussion point to look at our board policy, look at how we're, you know, allowing outside groups to use the facilities and, and finding a balance. The, the fire and police have, they would love it if after July 1, we don't allow these outside, these large outside groups to use our facilities.
I can piggyback on that a little bit because the fire and the police, in a sense, report to me, the other two guys. Crowd control is a significant issue. I believe the ratio is 1 to 300. They'll call for one firefighter and they'll have thousands. Another concern I know that they talked about was, I'm going to call it financial. They literally had a, are you aware of this, a trash can? Okay, good. So I'm not spelling any of them. Literally had a trash can with money in it. And I'm talking money in it. It's, you know, with no security whatsoever. I understand they were pretty much all over the building and the maintenance crew must have had a wonderful time after they left. So we, we've talked about this at, at department head meetings, the town hall. Parking was hellacious out there. I would strongly recommend that especially if it's not a Sanborn function, that perhaps we limit the use of this facility that the taxpayers paid for for the Sanborn function. Because I'll tell you, and I believe when it comes to the actual cost, you're going to find not only is it a net loss for the school, it certainly is a net loss for the town because we have to, I mean, we actually have to take police officers out there rather than be on patrol because of the, the, the street was loaded, you know. rather than be on patrol, because of the, 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 the street was loaded, you know? So there's a lot to this. We should have a good, solid discussion. Might want to bring in the police and the fire department, the chiefs. It was, it was not a warm, fuzzy meeting when we discussed it.
Michael comment first, then you, then me.
I'm not necessarily for cutting off facility use completely to outside, obviously. I mean, I think getting, getting the reputation for the school out there is totally a wonderful thing. However, some of these events, certainly not all, but some of these events, as someone who likes to have community events and, and student, uh, functions, they do, um, sometimes interfere with events that students would like to have. For instance, I believe, uh, the semi-formal that was on Saturday, we wanted it to be in the gym this weekend, but we couldn't, because there was an event going on in there. Or something, or it may not have been this past weekend, but there are other, there are other incidences, or other incidents just like that one, um, in which we would love to schedule something as soon as possible, but we can't, because it falls on the same day as someone who lives halfway across the state is using the facility. And it's kind of irritating, for lack of a better word.
Sheila?
I agree with what you're saying, Michael, but, um, to agree with Peter, um, the day of that event, I came over here to the school, rode through the parking lot, they were, they were all over 111, they were parked up on the lawn, they were, the cars, I mean, it was a nightmare. And my question was to Vicki, "What was going on at the school?", and she said, "Oh, they had a big gymnastic thing." The problem, as I understand it, was when they filled out the paperwork, they filled it out for five hundred people.
Oh yes, there were thousands.
And, yeah, there were thousands. So they took them at their word, and that's, it, it was, it was awful. I couldn't believe, they were, when, when I saw where they were parked, I just shook my head and said, "Oh my God", and then I heard there was an accident or something in the parking lot. And it was, it was a nightmare, so...
And where the kids were changing, and...
Yeah, and, and I mean, you know, it's nice to be able to say, "Hey, we can, you know, as a community representative, let people in here", but then when it becomes a nightmare, you have to, you have to stop them. I mean, we've had problems in the past with other groups, not just in the school, with our facilities outside. And, you know, it, it does, it starts to get to a point where, what are these fields for? What is the auditorium for? What was the school actually built for? Was it built for Sanborn and its own community? Or do we need that much money? And like you said, if you, apples to apples, I don't, I think it was a losing proposition.
Michael?
So, I, I have to admit that I've been part of this in other communities, and, and part of teams that actually had to like shy away. We used our secondary auditorium versus our premier high school auditorium, which I know we here don't have, um, after multiple events and episodes. I, I will say that my first introduction to Sanborn was a Father's Day dance competition, and I was really excited to be walking the halls and like, we do, this is a good idea. This is a great idea. It's very intriguing to me that, you know, the very thing that brought me to the school was, to this community, was actually this building. Because I know there's no other building in the inf, in the communities, other than kinks and grounds, um, but... So, I guess I would like to ask Dr. Blake and Carol, as you do this investigation, to come back with, how many event, because like I know firsthand, that that library gets wrecked. And I know when it's for changing rooms, how many, so if there's any like subsequent reports on how many times post-events you've had to replace stuff? Because I know the custodians here kick butt on what they pick up out of the pieces, because they're just leaving pizza crust here, there, stealing books, gosh knows doing what. I know, I, I, not so much, but you know what I mean? So if you could just come back and report and like incidents and the cost factor? What we're gonna lose potentially?
Revenue, yeah.
Revenue loss.
Those are also possible awful things.
We also need, we need to review the policy.
Policy, precisely.
And I think the review of the policy should definitely, um, definitely have the chiefs in.
Could you also tell us what the events were? And approximate numbers of people that were here at those events?
The problematic ones?
Actually, all of them, so if we're gonna make a policy, and, uh, you know, if we're gonna allow some and not?
Cherry pick.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a...
We like you, but don't like you.
No, it's not a question of whether or not, that's why I wanted the numbers.
You have to be careful with that, but, but in terms of events, we're, we're talking probably, you know, hundreds of events.
Over time.
We could make a chart, though, that had the size and all.
I just met on last, I just met on last year.
Maybe we just say you can't do more than six hundred people? Or maybe we just get a report of what's the average revenue that it's creating from these events?
So we, we can't necessarily get that, because ultimately, as indicated earlier, there was a piece of paper that was filled out, and they oversh, they overstayed their welcome.
Well, then the police should have had the authority to shut it down, right? By policy.
By policy, though. I mean, if they, if they were not, if they were deceptive...
Part of the problem was, although Vicki was there, there was nobody...
Vicki wasn't there, she answered my question.
Okay, who was in, who was there from the school?
I don't know.
Because I understand part of the problem was, there was no go-to person. I don't know about the school, but because they were individual groups, you couldn't say, "Okay, you're in charge of this function", not a school person, right? Well, this is what we have to do.
Well, therein lies the problem.
Right.
If, it would be that we, we have a custodian to open the building. There is no school staff.
Right.
Who are, are the go-to people, that's not...
Sam, you have a comment?
Well, I think it would be good to, and, and this was mentioned, have an idea of what's the revenue that comes in. And then, what's the problematic issues that we've had with the groups that were here? But, but also, um, thinking about how the scheduling goes, and who oversees it now, and making sure... It sounds like there has to be, there should be a staff member here, an administrative type position here, when there's those kind of events, because if stuff comes up. And I know some building, some schools have...
You have to pay them for it.
Right, we do. Some schools have like, um, what do they call it? Building event coordinators, so...
I don't know if...
And could that personnel sub... Is that personnel also looking into other scheduled? San, Sanborn should come first, I think that's...
Alright, so you want quick, new comment?
Okay, just a quick comment, okay? It's Friday night, the tenth, okay? We have a cheerleading competition here. It's a middle school competition. It's two sessions. There's gonna be, throughout the whole event, approximately twelve to fifteen hundred people. And that's, that's including the teams, okay? Chief Briggs spent a long time with us a couple of years ago. We have stanchions that we put up, doors that are marked. And this is where we have, we have custodians here, because it's during normal nighttime hours. Vicki is here as well to make sure everything runs right. The Booster Club runs the event for them. And we have people at, and this is where it comes down to. How do you run the event? Who's responsible? You know, all the food is kept in the cafeteria, nothing goes beyond certain doors. They can't even get a bottle of water with a cap on it beyond that door. It's, it's, we know exactly how many people are coming, first session, second session, they're gone. The second session comes in, everything is done precisely. Same with Destination Imagination, that's a huge event, too. But we have police and fire here, and we've run them, I don't know how many years, and we've never had a problem. The biggest problem that I've seen over the years is that gymnastic competition. And they never give you the right information, and then they bring thousands of people here, and it's...
But how many crowd control people are you gonna have? Twelve hundred, you need four, but they don't necessarily have to be firefighters, police are there, but they have to have the experience and that they have the training.
And we do, we have the police and everything here that night, so...
So you need four of them for twelve hundred?
Yep.
Well, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention, Dr. Blake, and, um, look forward to getting a report and policies subcommittee doing some review, too. Communications received sent this evening? None, written information, none. Agenda items for the next school board meeting to be held February fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, day after Valentine's Day. If you guys wanna bring me roses, that's great, I don't like dark chocolate. I'm kidding, I like food, hungry. Yes, Michael? For this meeting?
Yes, obviously tonight, we did have, uh, some people who, I wanted to respond to some of the things that had happened after the public comment. I mentioned this before, I'd like to at least see it voted on. I think we should either re, reinstate a second public comment or move the public comment now, that we have towards the end of the meeting, so the public can respond to the things that are relevant to this meeting. Because I don't, I know that there are people out here, heard things today, that are gonna come back next time and say, "Well, two weeks ago, you said this", and I would like to respond to it.
Who remembers it?
Exactly. And we're like, "Did, did, did you, did you say that?", or...
Yeah.
Not that I'm, not that I'm questioning that kind of ability, but I'm just...
We need to have a second, a second public.
We did, but we have marathon meetings, so it's becoming, we tried to eliminate that because of those marathon meetings. Which, this is the first time we might be out before time.
I know.
Cory, I have a question?
Yes, Ms. Brenner?
It says here...
Thanks, Michael. Yep.
The first deliberative session of the annual school district meeting will be held on Wednesday, February eighth.
Yep.
At seven PM, and it's published here in a location still being determined.
That's underneath the agenda, yeah. That's underneath this evening's agenda. That's to be...
In the, yeah, it's in the auditorium, on subsequent other ones, it's, this must have been an old agenda?
Oh, the one, first one we got?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so for the next school board meeting, for February fifteenth, um, agenda items, obviously, I put up there the thing I thought we're gonna be doing is deliberative review.
Yeah.
Do we know the other conversations we need to discuss, other than that, I assume, at this time? It, that might be a wise idea, as far as staffing goes, because there'll be between, you know, going back to hearing from the teachers?
Yep.
Maybe that's something we should think about, bringing the teachers to that meeting, if there's any, uh, thing that there might need to be addressed.
So could, do you think, would that even be a possibility, that we could ask, reach out to the teachers and say, "If you'd like to come and, and talk about..."
Well, we reach out to Dr. Blake as a school board.
Right, 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 right.
We ask him.
That's what I meant, I, I, you're here.
Yeah, so, we ask him and we'll, we'll take under his light. Okay. Alright, um, so announcements, moving, gonna move on, okay all? The first deliberative session of the annual school board, um, yes? Jiminy Cricket, Dr. Blake?
Yes, I need a date for the personnel committee to meet, because we have two principals to hire and a business administrator. We have no business administrator applications that are certified, and we have about, it says twenty-nine, but some of them are old applications, for instance.
Soon or later, obviously.
Yeah.
Say you and I, just you and I?
Do you wanna come before the deliberatives? Or is there enough time? And wanna get done before the deliberatives?
Yeah.
Take advisement, well...
What we have to do is, we, we, by the school board policy, we've gotta decide what the process is gonna look at.
So that's the personnel committee, right?
Personnel subcommittee, yeah.
Alright, so we'll, um, schedule a personnel subcommittee meeting before, um, our February fifteenth meeting, we'll have a, a personnel update. We'll have, before the fifteenth, we'll have a personnel subcommittee, which will be adding to, um, there'll also be a CCO School of Technology, um, update, most likely, if the meeting's upheld between now and then. Think there was one posted. Don't quote me on that. It's in March? It is in March, yeah. Alright, um, announcements here. The first deliberative session of the annual school district meeting will be held next Wednesday, February eighth, at seven PM here at the high school auditorium. Bring your friends, being at all. The next SRSD Excellence in Student Achievement, EISA, will be held on Wednesday, February fifteenth, prior to the school board meeting at five-thirty, here at the high school. Furthermore, the Sanborn Regional School Board Meal will be held on fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, at seven PM. And then furthermore, the second voting session of the annual district meal will be held on March fourteenth, from eight AM to eight PM in the respectful location of the Swayze Gym, and also the Newtown Hall. The filing period's been open for, um, school board, budget committee, and the moderator positions. We, uh, the school board have four seats right now, um, available. That closes this Friday, and you can pick up your, you can come in, sign here at the high school.